Okay, Mr. Casa, it looks like our webinar is live and our YouTube feed is live. The meeting is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Gilmer. This will call to order our May 2023 Safe Schools Committee meeting. As always, we'll start with Pledge of Allegiance. Sorry, different system here. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, with that, we'll move on to approval of minutes. From April 24th, 2023, do we have a motion?
So moved.
One second.
Second.
All right, any comments or questions before we vote on the minutes? All right, hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The minute, uh, the minutes pass unanimously. Now we'll move on to informational items, just one item. I, I know that, uh, that it's only one item, but a very important piece of our information to share with the community, but also part of our operations and for safe schools in particular. So, uh, Mr. Roan, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Casa, uh, Casa. Sorry, excuse my voice, everyone that's struggling with something, I don't know, but, uh, so I'll keep it short. And turn it over to Mr. Gilmore for presentation. Uh, but as always, with any public safety, the communication is important. Oftentimes we hear after action reports, um, where there is potential issues or failures. Usually communication is, uh, right in there on the list. So, uh, the North Penn School District has grown, uh, expeditiously in, in many ways regarding communications. Uh, and so, um, we're looking to continue that growth, uh, with some, uh, very necessary and, uh, needed uh, updates, uh, to, to do that. So to walk us down, uh, where we've been and talk about where we need to go, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Gilmore.
All righty, well, thank you, Mr. Roan. You sound great, by the way. You still got a really raspy, uh, very, very nice voice there. So don't, don't worry about your voice there. Uh, Brandon had asked me to just give a presentation on, um, our radio system. And where we're at, where we've been and what we've grown. I think, you know, sometimes we forget that we didn't always have a two-way radio system and just give a little history of, of where we were and, and where, um, we'd like to go, uh, moving forward. So basically prior to 2012, we, we had a transportation radio system that had 160 mobile radios and we defined mobile as the, the radio that's in the bus. Um, and we had mobile radios in our facilities vehicles. We only had 16 portable radios total, the handheld, uh, two-way radios, uh, back in 2012. And that was on the same transmitter, uh, that was, uh, located at the bus garage, one main transmitter, and it was basically transportation and facilities at that time. Uh, 2007 FCC passed a narrow banding mandate for all of our, our communications on, on our public and on our, our emergency channels. And basically what that meant was when you talk about bandwidth, there's a certain amount of space that you transmit on. Uh, and we were broadcasting on a 25, uh, kilohertz bandwidth all those years. And the FCC was requiring that we actually make that a little bit smaller. And it's actually half to 2.5. And that required us to replace every single bus radio and our security radios at that time. Uh, we made the decision, uh, to move forward with the narrow banding and, uh, making our system digital, which would give us the ability to grow, uh, the system as needed, uh, as we saw, uh, the need for communications in a two-way radio system, uh, growing. Many schools had, if you remember Motorola used to make those little yellow, um, two-way radios you could buy for like walkie-talkie, uh, neighborhood things, uh, and many of you may have had that for like sports or whatever. But they were, they were basically like $50 radios that didn't transmit very far and obviously wasn't very effective for, uh, emergency situations at our schools. Uh, if you think about the FCC too, at the time, the narrow band piece was really, all the television stations are the same. One of the re, one of the things that just happened recently was the sale of the spectrum of the television stations. So all of the television stations, uh, used to be like Channel 3 used to broadcast on Channel 3. They actually don't broadcast on 3 anymore. We put it on 3 because that's how we know it. But part of that too was, uh, reserving more and more, um, bandwidth spectrum for all kinds of communications. Obviously we have tons more wireless communications than we had 20 years ago. Uh, back in 2012, we replaced the bus radios. We got a new repeater system at the, at the high school transportation department. And we start getting in that terminology away from a, a transmitter to a repeater where we're taking a signal and repeating it across, um, the school district. So in 2012, we did all that, that fall, we, we opened up with our new digital narrowband radio system for transportation and security. And then that October, we had Hurricane Sandy and actually damaged our tower we had at the transportation department. And, uh, by the next summer, we had to replace that tower with the steel one you see there today. At the, at the time, it was a telephone pole, um, strapped, uh, an antenna strapped to it. And it was interesting during Hurricane Sandy, we found that, uh, the only, if you remember back then, the only communication we actually had in district and finding out what's wrong with our buildings, we had our roof ripped off of Hatfield. All of those things that were happening and the needed, the need for us to communicate with each other internally. The only thing we had were, was our two-way radio system. And, uh, we didn't have cell phones, uh, all those towers, all the power was out, all those types of things. We, we were really limited on our communication. Uh, so basically, once we had our base of our radio system, this is where we started expanding it out to the buildings. That following year, we added a base station to every single school so we could communicate an emergency from a district level to the building without cell phones, without IP phones, without those types of things. And we gave, uh, it seems strange now with the number of radios we have, but we gave five radios to each building for use. It was basically principal, secretary, custodian, nurse, and an extra one, uh, that was needed in the building. Uh, at that time, we also put another repeater over at Pendale Middle School. Due to the nature of that building and the construction of that building, we're having difficulty transmitting security channels at Pendale, which you're going to hear is a little bit of a, a theme here. Uh, and then we added our Swift Agent TurboNet, which allowed us to record all transmissions that we would make in a given day. So if there was an emergency, we need to review and go back, we could listen to that recording, pull it if we needed to. It also allowed us to patch between buildings in an emergency. So it gave us a system of patching, so we could patch a local building to a district repeater. Uh, I don't want to go through every single upgrade, but on this slide here is a list of what we did over those next couple of years up to this point. Uh, some key elements in this, uh, deployment is that we, we were expanding our elementary radios, uh, at every building. We have anywhere between 15 to 30 radios per building, uh, two-way portable radios right now. We have a repeater in every building to repeat their channels in the building. Uh, we made Montgomery Elementary School, when we renovated that building, a secondary district-wide site that has transportation security. So we covered the district on both ends. Uh, and the other big components we added in here were the, uh, the county radio repeater in the buildings so that we had, uh, emergency personnel could communicate in our building. So as we've been renovating, uh, we evaluate whether or not that's necessary. The two places we have them right now is Nap Elementary School. We had put a, a, a distribution amplifier for county radio, uh, at Nap. It was determined Montgomery didn't need it. They had just replaced their, uh, there's actually county radio repeaters at the Montgomery Police Station Fire Company and that wasn't needed at Montgomery. And then we did North Penn High School because we had this little incident here where we had a fire and we had issues where our emergency responders couldn't communicate when they were inside the building, taking care of those issues. So, uh, that's when we were able to, to bring that in here and we do have that here at the high school. So our current status of the system, uh, we have now three, uh, primary repeaters at the transportation department. And the reason we have more than one is the amount of traffic hitting it. So every time somebody keys up on a radio, whether it's a bus, security, facilities, uh, that we need the capacity to have more than two channels at a time to, to communicate back and forth. Uh, we obviously have the second repeater site at Montgomery Elementary School. There's a two repeater, um, site there. Uh, each building has a repeater. We have 215 vehicles, uh, with facility, security and our transportation. Uh, we have 500 portable radios to date, remembering we had 16 in 2012. We have 500 two-way portable radios now. Uh, I talked about the BDA at the two schools. Overall, we have 42 radio frequencies, channels, uh, licensed to North Penn School District currently. And of course, we have our TurboNet transmission and recording capability. So what do we use our radios for every day? Uh, the number on the bottom here is the one, I really didn't know until I looked it up. How many transmissions are made in any given day? And we're averaging about 1,100 transmissions a day on our radio system. We're able to look at that through our TurboNet system. But basically it's, it's transportation, it's security, it's, um, it's our one-to-one special education aids. And that's been one of the major growths we've had in schools and the need to have somebody have a radio. If we have an eloper or a student, um, who has other needs that needs help quickly or the SPA team to come, that we have put a lot of radios in different special education rooms and directly with one-to-one aides that, that need that. Um, our special events, you know, we're deploying our radios and patching our systems for the big events, graduation or International Spring Festival, triathlon we just had this weekend, night of sound. Uh, so, so basically there's radio communications every single day. And just like email and the network that we experienced this weekend, um, it's one of these things that, you know, we didn't use 10 years ago on, at the level that we do now. Um, but without it, it's really difficult to, um, effectively function in a building without that radio communications. So if you remember back in January, I think it was January, we presented our budget. I had recommended at the time in our budget to purchase a spare, uh, repeater uh, and add an additional site, um, for basically a, um, uh, a third site for our EOC as necessary. And one of the things that's kind of come up since that time is if you remember, the reason I was recommending a spare repeater, um, even right now is because the, the, the timeline for getting equipment is, is eight to 10 months. And it doesn't fit a school district budget cycle properly. And, uh, we wanted to get a repeater in here before something failed because if we had something fail, we would not be able to fix it uh, for a significant amount of time severely hampering our, our ability to use our radio system. Um, we have been monitoring a coverage issue we have at Pendale Middle School. Uh, part of that again is the nature of that building. Uh, we also, part of that is we're trying to wrap the Educational Service Center into the zone of Pendale Middle School as, as the potential for EOC. We added security channels, uh, to Pendale, the district-wide security channels to Pendale a few years ago. Um, so that when we're at the ESC, the superintendent, um, our, our, our team that needs to monitor situations could actually listen to and monitor all situations in the district. And, and we've got a traffic backlog there in addition to some of the issues we have, uh, with the building. The other big thing we have is our recording and patching software is reaching end of life. Right now I can't get a spare part for that. Um, we're not ready to make any kind of recommendations on that replacement yet because it's pretty significant. We has to deal with the network and software and servers and all these components. And we're not quite ready to make a recommendation yet on the replacement on it. It's just something that we need to keep in mind as we move forward. So here comes my recommendations. I would like to begin the process of upgrading our three repeaters of transportation to match our Montgomery system that would then give us three spares. And I'll explain that here in a moment. I'd like to upgrade our Pendale Middle School as a district-wide repeater site, just like Montgomery, to handle the amount of traffic and make sure the signal is strong enough at that building. And we would like to purchase additional spare radios so that we can get them in place that when they're requested, we can get them to the teachers fast, quickly. So if there's a need, we get, we get a radio there. That's, that's the overview before we talk about any costs. I'm going to go back and explain each part here a little bit. Um, at the transportation system, I had, you know, recommended one spare repeater. As we're talking to our, our integrators and our vendors, in theory, all three repeaters, if I get a new one, it's a different model number, should all work together. In theory, uh, we have found practically that when you take a 11-year-old repeater that's supposed to do what a brand-new repeater does, that that's not typical. And what we don't want to do is put our transportation, our main repeater site at risk in, in taking something out and putting another piece in that doesn't work properly or the firmware doesn't match between two pieces of equipment. So practically, when we look at that, we're at a place where we should be looking to replace them anyway and not just be in a position to have a spare for a failure. Uh, but what that would do is if we replace that, we replace all three repeaters there, I would have three spare repeaters. So let's say we get a lightning strike or something that takes out Montgomery. I've got two spare repeaters plus an extra so that we have that equipment in-house to be able to quickly, um, take care of those issues. At Pendale Middle School, uh, you know, we're looking to just add, you know, there's one repeater there now. We would like to have a second repeater there, upgrade both of them and make that site, uh, wrapped in the, the Educational Service Center. And because right now, the way we have it set up, the Educational Service Center is our EOC location. Uh, and to make sure everybody at the ESC administratively has the ability to communicate in an emergency. And, um, finally, like, you know, I talked about the spare radios for special education. I used to have spare radios that I could just take and deploy. And if you remember, um, part of this year, we did purchase, uh, 25 new security radios. Those 25 radios that security were using, we immediately redeployed. There was that much of a backlog in our, in our system that we needed radios in our buildings, that I don't have any spares again. So we have, we have a couple of security spare radios, but for classroom radios, when needed, I take my radio, we take the radios from people and deploy them to the locations needed until we can figure out how we're going to accommodate, um, the needs in that building. Uh, so they're, they're the big items. So overall, um, the cost of those things is, you know, before we bid 123,000, I've only budgeted 54,000, so we're looking at this to do what I put here. It's an additional $69,000. And I'd like to just discuss the possibilities there. Because starting the process to bid and spec and lead time on, uh, when this equipment's available, like I said, it's not fitting an appropriate budget cycle that if we start, if we budget this for 24, 25, and this starts in July of '24, I'm probably not going to see this until '25. And that's two years from now to make, to make that happen. So that's why we wanted to bring this forward, A, give you an update where we're at. Um, we're functional. Uh, we're, we're seeing some, some issues. We had some issues over at Pendale, um, but we're really looking to making sure we're not, um, caught off guard. If something fails on us that we're not expecting, um, to severely hamper our ability to communicate, uh, with our two-way, two-way radio systems in the district. So that's the overview. Um, just like to open up the questions and, and if any clarifications on what we presented tonight.
Sure, uh, any committee members, questions, please raise your hands and we'll try to get you in order. Uh, that way we'll have a process to this. Thank you for that presentation, uh, Mr. Gilmer. I know what, uh, it, these radios are essential and really I have to commend everyone, the administration and, and this board going back over a decade and making these proper investments for the community. So, uh, appreciate this depth of detail so that the board understands this as well as the rest of the community. Um, as we continue to, to have these discussions. So Ms. Wesley and Dr. Bauer.
Dr. Bauer, you want to go first?
Sure, happy to. Thank you, Ms. Wesley, and thank you, Mr. Casa. Uh, good evening, everyone. Thank you for your time and Mr. Gilmer, I just want to thank you for your presentation. Um, it is, I hope the, the other administrators on the call would, um, agree that my, my leadership philosophy is really to surround yourself with great people and trust them, uh, to do their jobs well. And when they fall short of that, hold them accountable. And there is no administrator in the district that is easier to trust than Bob. Uh, when it comes to his expertise, um, in his areas and his areas are vast because he's, he's an expert, it seems like in all things. So, um, if Bob says we need it, um, and it's something he thinks we should pursue for communications and safety purposes, I trust him entirely. Um, and I think the entire, uh, I think the board does too, right? So, um, it is not my area, uh, but I do trust that he's the best in the business. And if he says it's something that we should prepare for, then that would certainly be my recommendation, uh, to our Board of Directors. So Bob, thank you. I'm in full support of your recommendations, um, and in support of us doing things properly, uh, not quickly, but properly.
Thank you, Dr. Bauer.
Ms. Wesley and then, uh, Mr. Roan and then Madam President.
Thanks, Mr. Casa. So, Mr. Gilmer, yes, um, I wasn't going to say what Dr. Bauer said, but yes, to whatever Dr. Bauer said, I support. I'd like to even take it a little bit further. I have a couple of questions, a few questions. So your Emergency Operations Center, is there a, is there a designated emergency operations center for our district?
So we don't have a, like a physical space that is designed sitting there waiting to be an EOC standing by. That's some of the things we've talked about. Uh, we use the, right now, what has been past practice has been, uh, basically the Educational Service Center Conference Room A, uh, being prepared to come in. That's why all of our cabinet have radios to come in and use that space, bring their telephones, plug in right there at the ESC. And Conference Room A is the designated EOC. Uh, we have talked about like physical location, that is only that, uh, that has not moved forward much, but practically it's the Conference Room A at EOC.
Okay, so my two senses, and this is just for consideration, that there be a designated primary EOC, not at the ESC at some point, which may, I think, um, modify what you want to do. I have no idea what that cost, but to have it there, um, at the ESC, which is basically the, the heartbeat of the district seems a bit off to me. You can tell me otherwise, I'll defer to you. Second thing is the three main, um, repeaters that are, are at the Transportation Center. Do, can you swap them over to the ESC if you lose them or, you know, how do you, how do you maintain that? How do you swap over so you don't lose transportation communication, please?
Sure, so, um, we'll take transportation. There's three repeaters there and, and the three that are there are for capacity. There's the most amount of capacity is going through that site. And so that's a number of phone calls, number of transmissions you can do simultaneously. Um, so if we lose one, we lose capacity, right? We lose capacity. If I lose all three, I lose most of my capacity, right? There's still a little bit of Montgomery site over there. We have two primary sites. Uh, so, you know, basically with the repeaters that we have now, the, the original ones are still capable, um, to match what the new ones I'm purchasing, right, or recommending to purchase, I should say, um, that they can be programmed, put the frequencies in, program it and swap it. Um, you know, the reason I had said, uh, just looking of swapping out, I just, it's my experience that when you're doing that and you have one brand-new piece of equipment with two other pieces, they don't always want to talk together properly together. Um, but it doesn't mean that, you know, one dies, I can't get it, everyone gets transmission. So I may not have recording capabilities, I may not have some other pieces, but I would get my capacity back if I could swap.
If you lost the Transportation Center, can you swap any of that over to Pendale or the ESC or?
Not, uh, not to take, like, take that site and just move it from a standpoint of adding more capacity at Pendale. Uh, the antennas wouldn't be the same because it's a bigger site here at Transportation. So I could swap a failed repeater, right? I could take a failed repeater and swap it. I couldn't make the site the same. There are different frequencies, uh, different antennas, different, different components that allow those frequencies to broadcast out.
There can't be a bumpless, seamless transfer to another location to, I guess, replicate what is happening at the Transportation Center, correct?
Correct. And, and if we were looking at what I'm talking about here of adding that third site, it would cover the district and give me three sites totally.
All right, all right, then you would have robust and you would have bend strength, you would have depth, that's what you want to do. So, so again, I appreciate what you just said, you know, and I know you, you know, the budget could potentially increase by 69,000. But I guess, working toward, and you tell me, um, not now, but at some point, I'd be interested to hear about, um, a standalone, um, you know, EOC, um, especially for a district this large, as we move to 21st century education, what the needs would be. You want to make it as efficient and as, you know, real-time in communication as we possibly can. So if there's other steps you can take while you present all this to the board, you know, if it makes sense technically, financially, I'd be welcome to hearing it. Thank you.
I appreciate that. I know, uh, and Brandon can speak this too. I know that's a priority for Brandon as well. We've talked about that. As soon as he came on board, we started talking about, uh, what that could look like. I don't think we're quite there yet, um, but we were continuing to talk about it and I think it's a great point. Thank you.
I think Mr. Roan was next, right?
No, by all means, please go.
Okay, I, um, would just concur with what everybody else has said. I trust Bob's expertise and it seems like whenever there's a, well, not whenever, but like there have been times when there's a ma- major emergency situation and, um, people could not talk to each other, communications was an issue. So I would never want that to occur here at North Penn because, you know, we didn't invest in our infrastructure. So, um, so I'm, I'm for this. If, um, that's what's needed, then that's what's needed. So, um, do we need to take a vote on this? All right.
It'd be, uh, just informational, uh, this evening. So, uh, just making sure that we're in the loop as this process begins. Uh, Dr. Bauer can correct me if I misspoke.
Now, you're spot on, Mr. Casa. We're simply, I think, Mr. Gilmer's simply asking for essentially, uh, the, this committee to give him permission or blessing to proceed. Uh, it's non-committal at this point in terms of dollars and cents. It's just, he wants to go down the path of, uh, taking it further and putting, investing the time and energy. And then it would come back to either this committee or it could come before finance. It could even come to a work session of the full board, but it is, it is a large investment. Uh, Bob, I did have one quick question. Is, are most of the materials you're thinking of on like Co-Stars, for example, or would it have to go out to bid?
Okay. Yeah, it is on Co-Stars. And we would determine whether or not, uh, which, which way we'd want to go. If we want to bid, we feel like we would be, uh, competitive that way, uh, more competitive that way. Or if it's, you know, mid, resources available, but it is on, all of this is Co-Stars capable.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Roan?
I, I was going to echo, uh, Dr. Bauer's, maybe there. It, it literally was, uh, an ask of Mr. Gilmar and it off to the races. And it was done, a couple of conversations. So I appreciate, uh, his ability, his knowledge, his expertise, um, to simply take a conversation and, and move forward.
Thank you, Mr. Roan. And, uh, Mr. Gilmer, uh, understanding that there's going to be more work ahead, do you foresee, uh, the need or at least the option to have other, uh, technical expertise from the outside that helps with standards, uh, engineer? I mean, you wear a couple of hats already, so should we be considering, uh, protecting our investment, so to speak, and, and supporting your efficiency?
Now, I appreciate all the comments and I, I am not an expert in every single area. So that's, that's, that is a fact. Uh, and that's part of the second component when we're talking about the need to research, bring other people on board when we're talking about what's next on our, you know, our, our connectivity between all these sites, our servers and recording capabilities and our patching. Uh, that's what I talked to, to Mr. Roan about earlier. I was like, I'm not comfortable making a recommendation at all, uh, on that component of it. The repeater side of this is hardware. Uh, we do not install these. This would be integrated by a, a vendor, you know, uh, approved by Motorola to do this work. Uh, so we're not, we're not doing that work. Uh, but absolutely moving forward of how do we best utilize everything we have as we move to the next phase? This is straight hardware recommendations on backups, uh, and then coverage. Uh, but overall, for sure, Mr. Casa, um, we would want to bring in other folks, uh, to give us expertise and, and best practices in the industry and what's next. And that's really, you know, the piece where I'm at, the server, the servers. The, uh, repeaters we're looking at is part of that next, what's next capability. Uh, while they will do the same as our existing repeaters, it also has the capability for, you know, what we call our Capacity Max system for transmitting, utilizing more of our network, uh, as backup of data if we need to transmit it to another building.
Yeah, that would be great, uh, because I, I see that, those mesh opportunities and, uh, right, even in, for first responders with upgrades now to systems that they have for frequencies. And, and that's also, I, I want the community and, and this, uh, committee to also, uh, have some context that this, this is just one pillar in that overall program. It's very important, especially in terms of first responders, um, you know, whether it's a, uh, an active incident or an emergency, whatever it may be, that people can communicate back and forth. Uh, it's very important to not just use cell phones. And so the, the more radios we're getting in hands, um, and on systems that, that are, are modern, uh, that's increasing, um, or it's reducing our risks. You know, should, should something occur or, uh, you know, mitigation need to, need to happen. But this is part of that larger investment. I believe we're close to a million dollars, if not past it, over the last five or so years of upgrading systems. There's alert us, well, uh, that system which is used. And I, I'm also, uh, this committee is aware of and has provided some of the oversight for ensuring that our PA systems work, that, uh, the voiceover IP, uh, alerts also happen for all of our desktops and in the classrooms. Um, even the external, um, at the high school, making sure that we have external speakers that are able to work as well. So it's, it's part of a, a larger, uh, tapestry there that, that's being, uh, you know, that, that's So it's, it's part of a, a larger, uh, tapestry there that, that's being, uh, you know, that, that's being woven together here by our administration and really that's, those are the type of things with what we see in the news, uh, you know, across the country and what we worry about in our own community. This is the backbone that needs to be very strong, um, right? We talk about behavioral threat assessment. We talk about hardening of, of our, uh, sites. Um, and also, you know, the, the soft holistic approaches that are proactive, but the communications is the one thing that needs to be working every single day, um, you know, even on a boring day. And so thank you for this attention to detail. Really appreciate it. Any other questions? Uh, Dr. Bauer, is this an opportunity? I heard maybe a Freudian slip with, with server come out of Mr. Gilmer's mouth. An opportunity for you maybe to, to, uh, update the community on, on yesterday.
Yeah, certainly. Thank you, Mr. Casa. And again, good evening, everyone. Um, it seems as though this committee is bad luck. I just want to put that out there. Like we have major events happen every time. We're gonna have a safe schools committee meeting. Um, it seems like you're always asking me to report on the day's events, Mr. Casa, but, um, so yesterday, and I'm sure we'll get into this if, if time allows. I know the agenda for the FNO meeting is quite extensive. Um, but if, um, Mr. Schneider can certainly provide the expertise from a more technical side. What I can say about yesterday's events and the communications from me about the potential for a virtual day or that, um, we had a, one of our, um, generators had a malfunction last week. This is Friday. And we needed to order a part for said generator because it is a backup for some of our network systems. And, um, the part was going to be quite a while, so we had to get a temporary part in place or a temporary generator, excuse me. As a result, we, um, over the weekend, there was a malfunction. Uh, we are not exactly sure of the cause of said malfunction, but it's related to this temporary generator that we had in place. This caused a small electrical malfunction, which was, some have said a fire, uh, some have said not. Regardless, there was smoke, um, and a flash of sorts. And it resulted in our servers shutting, shutting down altogether. So we got everything back up and running yesterday afternoon. So I was actually taking my son to a Little League game and I heard from Mr. Rowan, hey, small electrical fire at North Penn High School. Everything's under control. We're fine for school tomorrow. And then, uh, at the conclusion of my son's game, my, my phone started, um, pardon the pun, my phone started blowing up and I was hearing that we were having network issues. So after a, a couple hours of network issues, it became apparent that we might be jeopardizing school today. And I actually heard from our director of technology that the thought was it was unlikely that we, we would be able to hold school. So, uh, to benefit our community, our parents, students, and of course, the staff, I sent a communication yesterday afternoon saying, hey, look, we might need to go virtual tomorrow uh, because of an incident that happened at North Penn High School impacting the network systems for the district. Well, I subsequently, in trying to send a, a preventative email, received all kinds of hate mail saying, you know, back in my day, we used to be able to have school without the internet. Uh, and so I thought it would be appropriate to address it here in safe schools because we have many, many things that are impacted um, beyond just teaching and learning when we don't have the internet, right? Our security systems, our swipe door access, um, our school nutrition services and kids being able to pay for their lunches and orders and people being paid and, uh, taking leaves and whatever, like all of our systems. If we don't have internet in the district, there are so many things that are impacted, um, that it would actually, we would be more productive and make better use of taxpayer dollars if people are working remotely. And students and teachers are teaching and learning remotely as well. So obviously we've shown that we can do so remotely. We want kids in front of teachers and we are more effective uh, that way, but in an emergency such as what presented itself yesterday, we were going to be prepared to be, uh, remote. That all said, uh, our facilities and technology team pulled off what was at one point thought to be unthinkable. And they resolved the issue and we were able to function properly today. So I just wanted to provide that context that was, and the reason I want to say it here and Mr. Schneider can provide more context again, if time allows tonight, uh, from a facility standpoint, but there were school safety concerns if we had no internet. I mean, that would be no phones, right? We have IP phones. So no phones, uh, no ability to communicate outside aside from cell phones. And Mr. Casa, you just beautifully articulated why cell phones aren't, can't be our only means of communication. So that's a brief update for this committee. I know it was disruptive and people were scrambling on a Sunday evening, but we thought that would be the best way to handle it. Give them a heads up. Hey, this is a possibility for tomorrow. We'll let you know by nine. I'm pleased to say we let folks know by eight. Um, and it all ended fairly well today. So, uh, go ahead, Mrs. Stoll.
I just wanted to thank you for clarifying that and, um, putting that in context because I am one of those old people that used to go to school without internet. So all those other systems are important. So thank you very much for putting that in context. And also I think, um, I did not realize that the internet, like the server or whatever it is at the high school provided the internet for all the other buildings because people were asking, well, if it happened at the high school, why did it affect everything else? So thank you for that context. And
Yeah.
You keeping us updated yesterday.
There's actually, uh, I think Dr. Waters is, um, not on camera right now, but she was surprised when she moved over to assistant superintendent. And we kind of went on a tour and she got a, a taste of the secondary world. Um, I remember taking her into the tech suite. She's like, I didn't even know this was here. Um, so a lot of people don't know that our infrastructure does exist over at, uh, on the North Penn High School campus. Where specifically? We're not going to get into that, but it is at North Penn High School.
Dr. Bauer, I just want to say I was amazed when I walked in after working there over twenty something years and having no clue. So yes, it was great. It's amazing.
Ms. Wesley.
Thanks, Dr. Bauer. Real quick, do we have, where are our backup servers?
So we do have, uh, I would need Dr. Landis. Maybe Mr. Gilmer can help me out here. He's a little more tech savvy than I. We have, uh, cloud-based redundant services as well as the backup servers exist at North Penn High School. So we have the main servers, our backup servers, and there are other places around the district where we store information as well. We're primarily cloud-based at this point in terms of, like, in, information. Um, everything is out there in the cloud. That's why we would have been able to work remotely, right? We can access all of our information, but if we were in district, we wouldn't have had internet.
Okay.
People have it.
So maybe this is a question for Mr. Gilmer, and this is me being old too. So I'm used to, you know, you have your main server and then you have a backup server somewhere else, like not on this, in the same building or on the same floor, in the same room or do we have that, Mr. Gilmer? Or do we need that? Let me ask that more. Is that, do we need it?
So I'm not going to speak for Dr. Landis at all.
Oh, okay. That's fair.
I will tell you this is that, um, you know, we have one data center and that's with the backup power and the generator and all of that here at the high school. Uh, we have our redundancies throughout and we have backup internet. But once, you know, if it gets to the high school, we have backup internet, one location, another location, but if it all fails here at our core switch, and you've heard her talk about their core switches.
Yeah.
Which is the bulk of what handles the traffic of the network that's here. But Dr. Bauer is completely right. Most of our systems are cloud-based school messenger. We're able to make those calls and emails. That's, that's cloud-based and we took that out of the data center. And Hurricane Sandy actually taught us that lesson because when we lost our hair completely at the high school, uh, we had some issues with, um, being able to communicate, uh, with email and, and our website and those types of things. Our website's offline, Canvas is offline, Infinite Campus is offline, and by say offline, in the cloud, right? So she should definitely give you a presentation on that. I'm not going to get.
You know, I, I think that would be helpful because when we talk about the systems from the options one and two, we know about the systems, the HVAC, the plumbing, the electrical, all of that. I think that's important that we understand the robustness, the resiliency and the redundancy for these systems that are integral, you know, they're like our heartbeat. So I think that is something, Mr. Gilmer, you know, would, I, I would like to see. So we're understanding what that looks like. Thanks.
Chair Wesley, you're more than welcome, uh, to take this as an agenda item in facilities and operations.
Why, thank you, Chair Casa.
Any other, uh, questions or comments on this topic?
No, thank you, Mr. Casa, for that time.
Thank you, Dr. Bauer. Yeah, it's, it seems like it's evolving very quickly. Um, and, and I'm so happy for, uh, Dr. Landis and the work of that team. Uh, because I, we probably wouldn't even have the, the good insurance policy we do for cybersecurity if we didn't have all of our, you know, all of our redundancies and, and training and technology in place. So it's really, uh, ramped up quickly and, uh, board's been pleased with that. So thank you. We look forward to continuing momentum. Uh, let's see, any, I will move on to other business. Is there any other business? We'd like to start with our student representative. Um, any questions, comments, topics, Karina?
Thank you, Mr. Casa. Um, so unfortunately, the safe school student meeting that was supposed to happen today got rescheduled to next Tuesday. Um, so no real updates for that. Hopefully at the upcoming meeting in June, I can, um, post some solutions and like student perspectives that were discussed at that meeting. But, um, I also wanted to say that I think North Penn students especially really appreciate the transparency that, um, North Penn gives us as far as like giving details about the incident that happened yesterday. Um, but beyond that, I think providing students with the platform to voice their opinions and like opening up, um, student reps. It, there was like an announcement last week or the week before, um, allowing more students to apply to opportunities like this. Um, I think it's the little things like that and showing North Penn students that we can have a voice and we can, um, take initiative. Um, I think that's what really makes North Penn special. So I just wanted to say thank you for that.
Thank you very much, Karina. Uh, it means a lot because, um, though we can sit here on a committee and there's oversight and certainly, uh, some serious responsibilities. We're not the experts that staff, students and families are because you're in these buildings and the eyes and ears every day in a very large district. So um, thank you for, for that comment. And we'll do whatever we can to continue to clear paths to make sure that that communication and transparency exists. Uh, any other business?
Yeah, Mr. Casa, I just wanted to chime in there on, uh, Karina's point that I remember a time where we used to try to get student reps and we had committees that didn't have reps at all. And we would actually like, as high school principal, and I know Mr. Nicholson can echo, we would like beg kids to do it and they wouldn't. And quite frankly, how many kids want to invest this amount of time? Um, and Karina and some of her predecessors have really made the role impactful. Um, and this year we have twenty five reps for next year. Mr. Berger, uh, sent me the list of folks. We're actually meeting with the reps tomorrow. Dr. Waters and I um, talked to them about the role and the responsibility of being a board rep. Um, but I couldn't believe the list when I saw it. So we used to not be able to get five and we now have twenty five. So Karina, thanks for making it the cool thing to do. Um, and, uh, and we really appreciate you. So thank you.
Mr. Row.
That's really, I just want to say that. That's, that's awesome. Sorry. I didn't mean to interrupt.
That's great. So Mr. Casa, do you have, you want to discuss the other business about the climate survey?
We'll throw that to Mr. Gilmer, but, uh, I believe Mr. Rowan had commented.
Okay.
Sure. Just wanted to provide some updates and old business, uh, to the, um, we've gone through now the next round of training for BTA for, uh, school sites and, uh, SCCs and guidance. So, um, that, that train is steadily moving. Uh, we're pretty much the vast majority through. We have just a small section of, uh, folks to get trained up on, uh, this week. And then we will be, uh, everyone will be trained from, for all BT, BTA teams across the district.
Behavioral threat assessment, right? And then what, does that start all over again next year? Is that an annual training, Mr. Row?
It will. So, uh, it'll be basically on a, about this time again next year. Um, and then obviously, um, if there are any changes in roles and, um, folks coming in and out of teams or on and off teams, um, we can provide that in-house immediately, uh, through, through, uh, instruction.
Thank you. Without any other business, we'll go to Mr. Gilmer who'll just give a, a brief, very, uh, brief demonstration. Anyone who is, uh, watching this now or in the future, uh, this recording uh, about the climate survey, which is very important. That's something that really through the safe schools committee and that lens, uh, many years ago, uh, we've made sure that, uh, North Penn was going to lead and not follow. And so we launched the climate survey. Maybe Dr. Bauer has some comments about that because he, uh, he gets the credit for, for making sure that this can, uh, this happened. And now that it continues, Dr. Waters might want to say something as well. And then there's the reimagine page, which, uh, which is also very important. And then, uh, lastly, um, I, I just want to make sure, um, everyone is focused on Memorial Day and the Pendale Memorial Garden for those North Penn students who gave the ultimate sacrifice. Uh, I believe that's going to be at, is it ten forty-five or eleven forty-five? We'll have to look that up while Mr. Gilmer, um, may, gives a quick walkthrough here.
Mr. Casa, I think it's eleven fifteen.
Eleven fifteen.
On five twenty-nine. I did, I, I did just check.
Thank you very much. Sorry. Still at work and don't have that up. So eleven fifteen.
Yeah, basically for that ceremony, it follows the memorial ceremony in Lansdale after the parade. Cause our students are down there, uh, participating in that and they come up to the corner there at Hancock or a church and Penn Street. Uh, so it's between that, that window there that you have there, Kathy. Uh, Dr. Bauer, Dr. Waters, uh, can talk to, speak to the survey. We were just talking about where was it? How do you find it? Obviously we emailed it to, um, parents and staff today to begin. It's right here on the main page and it'll be up here through the end of the, uh, survey time. Um, just real quick, I know there's a question over looking at the, um, where the dropdown menu for languages. So if you go to this, you can go to the link for the Hanover survey. And, uh, right at the top here is your language dropdown and I'm not going to change my language because I'm not going to see anything after that. Uh, but you can change the, do the, the, the main languages we have here and begin your, your survey right here. Uh, as far as the other pieces, if you haven't seen it yet, uh, going back to the main page or reimagine site is linked here on the main page. Um, see if this will pop up. I'll wait for that to load. There it is. And all of the information, uh, that we've shared to date, um, about the high school renovation is located on this site. Uh, so you can get into the history, um, our different videos, uh, photos, slide decks, all the presentations are all on the site, including our frequently asked questions. And we update this frequently because they're frequently asked. So there are questions coming in all the time off the site. And you can go in here and add your questions, uh, or comments anytime to this site. Um, and we'll put it in the frequently asked questions. We still have this open invitation that if you'd like a tour of the high school, you can click here and request a tour of the high school and we'll schedule that with you. As far as the survey goes, I don't know if Dr. Waters, Dr. Bauer, if you guys had anything to say, uh, about the survey. Um, I don't have the date in front of me when that closes.
Yeah. So typically they're open for two weeks. Um, and we did ask the schools to give it a few days. I think they're not supposed to do it until Thursday. Just to give parents the opportunity to opt out if they'd like in accordance with board policy. Parents certainly have the opportunity to take it first and view the survey. Um, and it's, uh, just a reminder, I know we've said it plenty of times in this committee, but it's important to reiterate. Like this is the same survey we took back in two thousand and nineteen and a lot has changed since two thousand and nineteen. But under Mr. Casa's leadership, um, taking a climate survey is an integral part of schools, comprehensive school safety. And, um, being able to look at the data longitudinally and then comparatively to other districts across the country is very important to us. So I recognize that the data may indicate that, uh, uh, the climate in our buildings is not better in some areas and I'm sure better in others. Um, but kind of, um, uh, norm scoring compared to other districts and understanding the impacts and the effects of say the last three years that everyone's been through since the last time we took this survey is really going to be powerful for our administrative team and kind of setting the course moving forward. So, uh, as we did last time, Hanover will kind of synthesize it for us. We have our own data analyst as well. Uh, she will kind of put together a dashboard for us. And then I'm sure Dr. Waters, Mr. Nicholson and Dr. McKenna can give a presentation uh, to the board in a work session as we did in two thousand and nineteen.
Excellent. Dr. Waters, any comments?
I think Dr. Bauer covered everything. I just wanted to mention the opt-out, uh, piece and he did share that. So I just want to thank everybody in advance, um, for taking it. Um, it really is important to us to get your feedback so that we can continue to improve. So just thank you for your time. If you happen to, uh, sit down for a few minutes and share your thoughts.
Thank you, Dr. Waters. Uh, and thank you, thank you for helping to lead this, uh, and advance it, uh, for our community. Uh, it's really, uh, climate surveys are, are best practice. It's really, climate surveys are best practice in higher education and K-12, it's a way to check blind spots. And that's the one thing that this committee and the board and administration are committed to, which is, you know, you have to look in the mirror and see where the problems are so they can be addressed. Those of you who frequent this meeting understand that's why we, we talk about incidents and tracking incidents and understanding that data as well. And so you take different data points, so to speak, compass points that will give you a better idea comparing them to what the real perception, or what the perception and the reality is of safe schools across North Penn. And we could see it district-wide, across different types of schools, and drill down on that data. And that's why we're promoting this, to make sure there's as many members of the community as possible take part in this, because it's that community voice that, that we'll listen to. So thank you, everyone, and I also want to make sure that, I mentioned about the Memorial Day service at Pendale, that is by our wonderful key club led by Ms. Linda Law, who, they not only run and organize that event, but there's volunteers out there this week making sure that that Memorial Garden is, is in pristine shape when they say, for, for that day. So it's an amazing community event to make sure we show our priorities and what matters and never forgetting. So if you're, if you're not down the shore, please come out to the garden at 11:15 a.m. on Monday, Memorial Day. Without any further information to share, I'll ask if we have any public commenters?
We do.
All right. I'll get to my disclaimer. Way too many windows open. Tonight's meeting is our regularly scheduled committee meeting. In order to meet the requirements of Pennsylvania Sunshine Law, it's necessary to record the names of all citizens who speak to the committee during the meeting. To ensure compliance with this requirement, it's essential that those planning to address the committee state their name and municipality. Members of the audience are asked to limit their questions and comments, members of the audience are asked to limit their questions and comments to three minutes, sorry, I think, I'll repeat whatever we have to say. So with that, Mr. Gilmer.
Okay.
First public comment.
You got it. Our commenter tonight is Mr. Jason Lanier. Jason, I have enabled your microphone, so when you're ready to begin, state your name and municipality for the record, and begin your comments, please.
Jason Lanier Lansdale, had, had two things, first about the communication system, I can't, I can't agree more with what Dr. Bauer was saying about Mr. Gilmer's acumen and his ability to run things smoothly. It's pretty impressive. I mean, from doing all these, the, the, just the meetings held, all of the, the online, it's amazing that you're able to get all this stuff done. I, I don't know if you have an extra set of hands working behind you that is able to, you know, run this meeting, do the presentation, and then also deal with commenters such as myself. So it's, it's, everybody, I think, who watches these videos knows how competent and excellent you are at your job. Regarding these new systems, one thing I would add to it is when you look at redundancy, you want to look at a couple different things, this is from my vantage point, different sort of environment, but similar, is MTBF, which is meantime between failure. And that's, that meantime failure is calculated based upon really catastrophic failure, meaning lightning strike or something, and operational failure. An operational failure might have to do with working the piece of equipment at capacity. So when you come to designing a new system, you might want to take your capacity, what's called the N plus one redundancy, is you take your capacity divided by each server or what have you, or repeater, and you use the enough to get there plus one. And the reason is, any one of them goes down, your system is still up, two of them going down, your meantime between failure would be exceedingly high. One failure possible, two failures not very possible unless it's catastrophic. I'll, I'll leave it there, that's, those are my chips on, on that, that, or my, my comments on that section. I did have a question, and I wanted to get Mr. Roan's opinion on this. And this is kind of serious, I'm not trying to take a shot, but I, in recent, not too long ago, we had an issue with one of the board members, and I'm running with the Montgomery Township Police, and some allegations that seem somewhat baseless made towards the, the police department. And how does that kind of baseless, and it was with the money, the board members went there to say something, they have people that are friends with the board members, sort of in their operative group, that are, are members of the Montgomery Township Board, and how that affects our relationship with the first responders in Montgomery Township and not if beyond, because certainly police departments talk with one another. And I think it's important that, that we have leadership that isn't doing things that negatively impact our first responders, and I think that's happened. I don't know why there hasn't been more communication about this, but it's certainly, it's something to look forward as, as a soft spot in our security. So I'll leave it there, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lanier, and I noticed you used the word think, and there's a lot of questions that you raise which have space in them, but we're fortunate enough to have a great superintendent who can answer this and clarify exactly those questions you needed some more details about.
Sure, Mr. Casa, I'd be happy to respond, and I, I do want to say that this is a private matter between one of our board members, and we're not going to speak for her, and I'm going to ask Mr. Roan to refrain from commenting. What I can speak on is our relationship with local municipalities, and I can tell you without exception, that I believe our relationship with them is exceptional. We meet with them on a regular basis, Mr. Roan has already established strong relationships with them, and Mr. Dur, his predecessor, had great relationships. So I have met with that municipality and their chief since then, and to conduct school business, and it is business as usual. So we value our partnership with them, they are eager to participate in events in our schools, and, you know, do the walk to school day, and they'll come in and be guest readers and patrol our buildings if necessary, and of course, called upon in an emergency. So I, zero impact in terms of our relationships with our local police departments, and I'm very pleased to say that. So we feel fortunate, I hear from other superintendents that they may not have the same experiences, but Mr. Roan, I think we have seven municipalities, maybe eight, that we deal with, departments?
Six.
Six, okay, I was off, way off. So we have six, and I can confidently say to this committee and to the board and the community that we have a great relationship with the leadership and the officers in all six.
Thank you, Dr. Bauer and Mr. Roan, for also always leading those efforts and keeping those bonds strong, really great collaboration with our local municipalities. Any other speakers, Mr. Gilmer?
Nope, that is it for tonight.
Well, thank you very much, we don't have a summary, nothing's going to action meeting, and the next meeting of the Safe Schools Committee will be on June 26th at 5:45 p.m. virtually, look forward to seeing everyone there. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All right. Take care, everyone, have a good night.
Thank you.